Okay, so as I said before, that the PPR is a critical reading exam, which means that it's not just easy where they're going to ask you sort of like recall type questions. They're scenario based, so that they're like the highest level of rigor, right? And the way that they trick you is that they use words that would may or may not lead you towards another answer choice, the wrong answer choice, just by giving if they say something about ELLs, but the question isn't about ELLs and they give you an answer that's geared towards ELLs, most people are gonna choose it because they didn't ask themselves, what's the goal of the question? Yes, there's a special population here, but what is the goal? So we're gonna look at how to identify the goal of the question, how to identify the key words and sort of use process of elimination and the wealth of knowledge that you guys have of pedagogy to sort of ascertain the question. So read the scenario carefully, keep an eye open for important key words you may need to use to help with your decision. Read the question carefully, ask yourself, what is the question asking? Paraphrase the goal of the question in your own words. So I'm gonna read this one because it's a good one as far as trickiness is concerned and key words. So after students have taken a summative assessment, which of the following strategies is the best for a teacher to use to provide feedback to students on their progress? So lots of words, lots of ideas. What is the question asking? What is the goal of the question? There's a teacher in the scenario, what is that teacher's goal?
To provide feedback.
Feedback, feedback is really important on their progress. There's two things there, feedback on their progress, right? Feedback is really important. What is feedback? What does feedback look like?
Well, it could be with paperwork, writing, voice.
Which one is it most like, most, most of the time you get feedback in what kind of form?
Verbal.
It's a dialogue, right? Yes, feedback is speech, it's dialogue. Sometimes you can get feedback like on an essay, but that is not as effective as sitting down and saying, this is where you were last time and these are the specific concepts that you missed, blah, blah. That is sort of like targeted feedback. Whereas something that's written, students may or may not get that information. But feedback typically, when you think about it, it's something that's spoken. So the teacher's goal is a strategy, right? To give feedback, to talk to the kids about their progress after what?
After the test.
Their assessment.
After a summative assessment, so what does that mean?
Overall.
Overall, so that means in summary, after all the learning has taken place, right? That's what summative means. Formative assessments happen throughout and before the learning and they form your instruction, where your plan, right? They help you get an idea of where you need to go, what, what do the students know? What did they master? Where are the weaknesses and what do I need to do to bridge the gaps? So that's how we form our idea of where our students are with formative assessments. Summitive is in summary, this is how you did in summary. So she wants after all learning has taken place, the best strategy to discuss student progress. So we sit it in a question, which of the following, which of the following strategies is best for a teacher to discuss students' progress after all learning has taken place? So comparing individual student results with former students' performance is the best way for teachers to discuss student progress after taking a summative assessment. No, and so when you say no, make sure you can bet yourself five dollars it's no, just yourself. Because I say it's no too, because if I'm looking for the best strategy to give a particular student a discussion on their progress, how would another student's grade have anywhere in that? In their plan or their progress, where they're gonna go? So that can't be the right answer. I can bet myself five dollars, that's not the answer. So having parents provide signatures to acknowledge receipt of the assessment is the best way for a teacher to talk to their students about their progress after all learning has taken place. No, it's not, that's not going to be feedback to the students and that's not a discussion. There's no sort of speech taking place between teacher and student. And that's what we need to see because the PPR is a critical reading exam, which means the words that they use in the scenario and in the questions and even in their answer choices, we need to be critical of because they match up and they align, that's how you get the, the best one. One is better than the other based on the words that are there. And you never add anything to it, it's just what's there. Discussing the results with the students to establish learning goals is the best strategy for a teacher to use to discuss students' progress after all learning has taken place. Yes, but let's not, let's not cross out D until we can bet ourselves five dollars. Including the assessment results in the student portfolio is the best strategy to provide feedback for their students on their progress. So that would be like having, after they took it, they put it in their folder, but who knows if they read it? And what kind of feedback is it if they never look at it? So out of what, from what they gave us, and D would actually be wrong because no discussion is taken place. Although on a technicality, you can give feedback written, but typically they mean like speech. The only one in which they're speaking is C, where they're discussing those learning goals. Okay, special populations. If they give you special populations, special ed, ELL, 504, economically disadvantaged, someone who's homeless, someone if they give you something that is a special population that we come into contact with, pay attention to it because they, they might give you background information you need to pay attention to. So if they say special ed, that means you know there are certain ways in which special ed have to be accommodated. So all of that information that goes with special ed, you should keep in mind when you're going through. But again, the most important thing is for you to identify the goal of the question. What's the teacher's goal? What's the goal there? What is the question asking? And then identify those key words to see, what am I looking for? Am I looking for increased engagement? The last one she was looking for, feedback, a way to do feedback, that was the goal. Or is it classroom management? Or is it critical thinking, increasing critical thinking? So find the goal, identify the key words and then use process of elimination and your wealth of knowledge with pedagogy to get rid of the other ones. If they're giving you a grade level or an age group, it's because they're trying to give you information from domain one, which is how are, how do the students grow? Like what is the normal growth pattern for the brain, for emotion, emotions physically? And we need to know that so that we can identify when students are deficient or they need special help from our special ed program. And we need to be able to adjust and accommodate for those differences. So if they give you an, an age group, pay attention to it because we would treat elementary students very differently from middle school. And it's not just because they're older, their brain works differently. In elementary, students cannot be conceptual. They are not gonna think abstractly, you can't just pontificate and think that they're gonna get it. They need to use their hands, they need to see how a plant grows, which is why we grow plants in elementary. They actually have their little cogs with the lima being in there because it's not enough to just read about it or to see a video, they have to live it, that's, their brains work concretely. They're picking up their empirical data, all of gaining all their prior knowledge and they need hands-on and concrete examples in order for them to, to understand. So the way that we teach and the assignments that we give and the strategies that we use with elementary students and even within elementary with the beginners and then with the fifth graders, you would, you could be a little bit more advanced. So understanding those, that comes along with when they give you a grade level. So if they're asking you how to handle something, think to yourself, would a kindergarten be able to do this? Or would a fifth grader be able to do this answer choice? Or is this above their cognitive ability, their emotional ability, their maturity level? And so if they give you grade level, definitely keep it in mind. If they give you an ELL prompt in, or in the scenario, then you need to automatically think of all the strategies that you, that go along with your English language learners. You have to provide direct instruction of all new vocabulary, academic vocabulary. So I was an English teacher, for me academic vocabulary would be like tone, mood, oxymoron, foreshadowing, so any of those, those words, obviously, even with my non-native speakers, I'm going to give them direct instruction of new vocabulary that allows them to write it in their own words because that's the best way and provide lots of images. But apart from that, with our beginner and our intermediates, we need to be giving them even more basic vocabulary so that they can understand the readings that we give in class. If you're a science teacher and you're going over something in the seventh grade, but you have an intermediate, you will absolutely have to give them a little bit more vocabulary so that when you do the reading in class, they don't have huge gaps of stuff. So they have basic language that's not built up, just to even have basic discussions. Were you late? You know, how was your homework? Did you have fun of the weekend? Did you see a movie? They don't have words at beginner for, did you even see a movie? So we, you have to provide direct instruction for vocabulary and you have to give them a million and ten opportunities to practice speech. If they're beginner and intermediate, they need to be talking. They need to be talking about what they're learning, even if they say it wrong. They need to be talking with their peers, they need to be talking with you. So any organic sort of authentic communication, not something where you give them a script and they have to read it and it's practice, but like you're doing think pair share? Or you're gonna start, you're gonna, let's say you're gonna read a story about the weather to elementary students, you know, like a little story. So you might say like, has anyone ever played in the rain? And then say, it's, find someone who's played in the rain or jumped in muddy puddles and then they run around. Have you jumped, have you played in the rain? Have you played in the rain? You might not think that that activity is so like fruitful for everyone, but for the people who are acquiring English, it's absolutely fruitful. And we have to make sure that we accommodate them in the classroom by giving them a million and ten opportunities, even if it means, because you should also sort of make sure that they have like a class buddy that speaks their native language and English and can be a sounding board and someone other than you to ask for clarification. So that class buddy they can do think pair shares with and just, you want them talking all the time. You want them practicing that English because it is the best way for them to get the listening and the speaking skills. Because we measure our English language learners in four ways, listening, speaking, reading and writing. And so our English language proficiency standards go from those. And we can't have them read and write if they can't listen and speak. And beginners can't listen and speak, they can only speak Spanish, they can only understand Spanish. So what you need to know about beginners is that they won't ask for clarification. So if you get a scenario where you have a beginner, you need to make sure that you are going and asking if they need clarification or you are doing needs assessments to make sure that their needs are met because they don't have the language with which to even say, I don't know what's going on. So those are our, our beginners. And allowing them opportunities to speak in class discussions and group work in your carefully crafted groups where you pick a diverse like group of students, high level, low level, ELL, native English speaker, rich, poor, Mexican, white. I mean, you want to give them the most diverse group and have them work together, have the strong ones sort of help the, the other ones. And we need to get our students to be comfortable in diverse situations, in situations, because that's what it is in the real world and so many people are having difficulties just being people who are different. Yeah, it's, it's silly, but obviously they were not trained and we have to do a better job of training our, our kids to do that. So next slide. This is one where they try to be tricky, really tricky. So identify those key words, I want y'all to identify them for me. I'm gonna read it for you. In a science class that includes English language learners, ELLs, a teacher encourages all students to monitor their own level of understanding by having them take notes in their journal as they read assigned text. An excellent activity that I have all my students do. If you've gone through the courses and you've annotated your standards because taking notes on a text that you're reading helps you understand it more, helps you monitor your understanding and that's called metacognition, thinking about our thinking. Did I understand this? Oh, this reminds me of that, this is very confusing, I need to find out what this is. Thinking about thinking, metacognition happens only within yourself, it does not include anybody else. It's you thinking about how, how you're understanding it and it is the height of learning and, and it means that you can adjust to when you understand it and when you don't understand it. What is the primary purpose of teaching ELLs? In particular, the skill of learning how to monitor understanding? So what is the question asking of us? What's the goal? And then what are the key words we need to pay special attention to before we make our final answer choice?
ELL.
Yes, ELLs.
Okay, so we have a special population, ELL, that's important, right?
And also the particular skill, monitoring their understanding.
Monitoring their understanding is, understanding is like monitor their own level of understanding. I know you can't see me pointing, but if I touch it, if I click on it, but monitor their own level of understanding. Again, repeated in the stem, so that's important for sure, it came out twice. They're monitoring, they're doing metacognition. The native English speakers, everybody does it, but why is it important for ELLs to do it? Oh man, sorry, what happened? So to put the question in our own words is really important. So you put it in layman's terms, you know what they're actually looking for. So what is the main reason of teaching English language learners how to think about their thinking? I'd just like to change it. So monitoring your understanding is metacognition, which means thinking about your thinking. So what is the main reason to teach ELLs to think about their thinking, right? To monitor, which means you adjust it when you monitor, right? So to think about your thinking. So the primary purpose of, or decreasing the student's intimidation associated with learning a new language is the primary purpose of teaching ELLs the skill of thinking about their thinking? Why would you say no? Remember, you have to bet yourself five dollars.
First thing is decreasing the students, why would you, you don't, you shouldn't be doing that.
Right, if that's a negative, and I said it here as a last resort, I look at the verbs. I feel like the verbs will never be, and I'm, not just I feel like it, sometimes I can actually choose which one is the correct answer just on the verbs. So we have decreasing, acknowledging, cultivating, promoting. It should always be positive, but in this case, technically, if you decrease intimidation, they do have it. This is one of the ones where they're trying to trick you by using the ELL for you to think, oh, it's ELLs, of course, they do feel intimidation of learning a new language, so that has to be it. But that's not the goal, the goal is why would we help them think about their thinking? That's the goal. So acknowledging the prior cultural experiences of the students is the primary purpose of teaching ELLs, in particular the skill of how to think about their thinking.
Well, I'll just leave it alone.
Laura, you were saying no, why were you saying no?
I don't know, I think it's D.
Well, I mean, it is D, but
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
It is, acknowledging their prior cultural experiences, we do wanna do that with our ELLs, absolutely. But are they doing that while they're taking notes in their assigned readings, like in a science class? Probably not. It doesn't say that and we don't add it. Yes, so cultivating a positive environment in which the students can learn is the primary, is the main reason or the main purpose of teaching ELLs how to think about their thinking. Class climate and the kids thinking about their thinking, is that any correlation? Not really, that's not gonna help cultivate that. Promoting the student's ability to adjust their thinking as needing is the main benefit of teaching ELLs, in particular the skill of how to think about their thinking. What do you say? Yeah, that's, yes, absolutely.
I was going by one.
One by one, yes, so that's one by one, so never, but you did it right. You didn't throw it out yet because you couldn't say it yet. You would have been able to and then you would have gone back, exactly, you would have gone back. So Laura, a little bit right ahead, which way to go, you guys are doing great. The point is, is this is not an impossible exam. You guys know the information that, that you need to know in order to pass the exam. It is the tricky questions that they on purpose are doing that you have to look out for, that you have to be aware of. How are we on time for you?
Oh, we're okay.
Okay, because we have about 10 more minutes with you and then I'll let you go. Do you have a class after this?
Me?
Yes.
I have a patient at 12.
Oh, that's right, a patient, a patient. I forgot. I, I forgot you were doing speech therapy. Very cool.
But we'll finish in 10 minutes?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, it's because I haven't eaten lunch, I didn't heat it up, I came straight to.
Oh my goodness, well, let's pause, let me
It's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is important too. If they give you time markers, if they give you a time before, during, after, first, second, last, anywhere in it, even in the answer choices, pay attention to it because sometimes there is a step, a process to how we do things. So if they want to know what happens during or before, it may or may not be important. If they say a teacher wants to check for prior knowledge before the beginning of the unit, which is the best assessment for her to use and they say summative assessment on blah, 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 how would you know that's wrong?
Because it's after.
Yeah, summative happens after the question said before. So anything that would have been summative would have been out. Anything that looked formative to you would have been, okay, this is a good answer. So the temporal markers are sometimes important. So we're gonna have one that also again tries to do the trickies, but remember, look for those key words. During whole class instruction, middle school teacher realizes that most of the students are reluctant to participate in class discussions and give one-word answers when they do participate. Which of the following strategies is the most effective for the teacher to use to increase student engagement? What's the question asking? What's the goal? What's the key words?
Increase student engagement.
The goal is to increase student engagement, that is the main goal of the teacher, to increase student engagement. When?
During a class discussion.
During class discussion, that is important, that is an important detail. So increase, her goal is to increase student engagement during class discussion, right? So having students answer questions on paper in class is the best way for a teacher to increase student engagement during class discussions. No, they're writing on paper, they're not even talking. That one has to be wrong. Giving students think time after asking probing questions is the most effective way for a teacher to increase student engagement during classroom discussions. Maybe, right? We can't say no yet, let's see what else. Asking students to answer questions online for homework is the best way for a teacher to increase student engagement during class discussion. They're not even in class discussion, it's not during, it's after at home, that's wrong, all the way wrong. Assessing students' understanding using an oral pop quiz is the best way to increase student engagement during class discussions. Remember, if they say is the most effective, they gave you maybe two effectivenesss. One is better than the other based on the words that they gave you. We need the best answer that increases engagement and happens during classroom discussions.
Would it, is it D because of the, because they're getting like an actual number of how many they understand and don't understand?
Is that the goal, but is the goal assessment for her? Is the goal of the question assessment?
No.
Good, giving pop quizzes increase student engagement? Because I know whenever I have pop quizzes, nobody made eye contact with me, everybody was like this. Which is the opposite of the goal of the question.
You have to increase their engagement, not the, you're not assessing them.
Exactly, and this would actually decrease student participation.
Because they wouldn't want even
Exactly, they don't want to be put on the spot because they're being assessed, they're gonna get a number and if they don't know it and they give this oral pop quiz part, the oral to throw you off, to make you pick it, because it's like, oh, it's oral and they're also assessing and we're supposed to be assessing all the time, but it's not in the goal, so it is the wrong answer, D. B is the best answer choice and it's actually what research says. Increased wait time is essential for our ELL students because they have to do translating in their brain, especially when they're dealing with intermediate and even advanced, advanced students, ELL students, especially beginner because they don't even have things to translate with. But even with all of our other students, if you want to increase student engagement after asking questions, extend your wait time. And I was so bad at this when I first started teaching, like my first two years of teaching because I'm like fast and I talk fast and so I'm like, Sofia, no Sofia, Mark, no Mark. And you like, forget you didn't had a chance, if you stuttered five seconds, I moved on to somebody else. I did have the right answer, but that was the wrong way. My goal was just to find someone that had the right answer, right? Not to assess whether Sofia actually knew it, if I gave her 10 seconds more, five seconds more, Sofia would have come up with the answer, but I moved on like that. So increasing your wait time, just slowing it down will increase student engagement and you'll get better responses than just like a yes, no or one-word answer. And that's research-based knowledge, increase wait time. Here's another one. So what is the question asking? What key word should I pay attention to? A teacher plans to integrate technology in a collaborative learning environment. Which of the following student activities would be most engaging to the students and achieve the teacher's goal? So what is the question asking and what key words we have to pay attention to?
Technology and engaging.
Yes, she wants the most engaging and achieve the teacher's goal. So what's the teacher's goal?
Collaborative learning environment.
Okay, so there's three things we need to make sure. So we need integrated technology, a collaborative environment, and she wants it to be engaging too. She doesn't want anything, right? Okay, no, no, she wants integrate technology, collaborative learning and for it to be engaging for the students, so students to have fun to do it, that is the goal of the question. So our answer choice needs to make sure that it gets those three things. If it only gets two of them, it is not the right answer. So presenting a multimedia presentation on a key concept is the most engaging way to integrate technology in a collaborative learning environment. No, they're doing it single, just presenting collaboration would be like a group project and it is not specified that it's group, so we can't say that it's collaborative. Creating a blog discussing the attributes of a book they recently read be the most engaging way to integrate technology into a collaborative learning environment. That is true, it does meet all three, right? It's integrate technology, it is collaborative and the students would love it, it would be engaging. But let's not discount C or D because we, we haven't bet ourselves $10. Reading an electronic version of a chapter in a textbook is the most engaging way to integrate technology in a collaborative learning environment.
No, they're doing it by themselves.
They're doing it by themselves, it's not collaborative, it only meets two of the things we identified. Comparing accounts of history events in film and print sources is the most engaging way to integrate technology into a collaborative learning environment. No, it's not, it would not be the most engaging, it's not even the most technological and I don't even know it's collaborative, but maybe this is individual, the only one that meets all three of the things that we identified as important to the goal of this question is creating a blog.
So the concept to this is to just utilize that highlighting technique on the test to really always make sure that all three things are main.
And the only reason this one was three is because it gave us most engaging and the question's them and then it said the teacher's goal, but the teacher's goal had two things in it, which was, and they, that's another reason, another way they get you to like, if they said, they could have just repeated this, integrate technology and collaboration, but they put teacher's goal, hoping you wouldn't go back up and look to see that the teacher's goal had two pieces to it. So it's a critical reading exam because every word that is chosen was chosen and they spent thousands of dollars on each test question, testing it, writing it, making sure it was tricky, making sure there was an answer choice that was wrong that people went to before the right answer choice, I'm serious. So be very careful while you're reading, you know, you know how to do it and it just, once you get good at it, and that's what I would say to do as practice. Any questions that you do have, practice questions, the ones that are the best or the ones that come out from the back of the Pearson. Use these strategies, practice them because it's not about studying test questions. It's about getting good at isolating the important information in a timely matter because you're being timed. So use those questions, go back and study them and then I'm gonna do this really quickly. Read carefully, find your key words. Don't eliminate an answer choice until you can bet yourself five dollars that it's not the answer and for a real reason. Eat a good breakfast, sleep well the night before, send your children away or give them Benadryl or whatever it is that you do. Sleep well because this is like a brain marathon. When people run a real marathon, they take care of themselves before, the night before, they eat like crazy carb load. You are doing. Critical reading, critical thinking for five hours straight. It is a marathon for your brain. Sleep well, eat well. And then know that you know the answers. You know what I mean? You know the information, believe in yourself, you've put in the work. And you'll do fine. I believe in you. And that's it. That's the end of the study session. Well, yes, that's it. That's the end of the study session, but if you'd like to go over other questions, we're gonna have a whole group um study session with other questions. Like I, I'm always looking for. Good questions or if I can come up with good questions myself, but like I said, it's hard because the test questions. They, I mean, they spend so much money writing them, testing them. Yes, each one exactly. Just like they do for our students or the STAR test. They do do a good job. They're just like they do for the STAR test. So. Um. I would suggest for the course of action for you Laura is to go over and study six, seven, eight, nine. Um, the competencies. And if you want, we can schedule another session next week during your conference for you to go over those and to go over some other questions. And um, and then just on your own, it's like muscle memory. You get better at like, it's, they'll highlight themselves. You'll automatically see the keywords, the better they, the more you practice. Doing the strategies, the better. It'll just happen to you easier. Like I don't, I can look at any content area book and probably figure out the answer, but just based on the keywords, you know, just on. Learning the tricks of the trade. If I do also know a lot of information. But um, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Besides the practice test that's on Pearson, uh, the one that you can print out, is there any other ones that you can take that are free? I know you can take the one that you have to pay $10. Is that the only one?
Yes.
Okay.
As of, as of right now, like if I could come up with. Questions myself, man, I can make a lot of money because people are always asking for of, you know, a PPR. Practice test. So yeah, I, it's not available. I will work on getting some extra questions. I do have some extra questions, but people bring me questions and I'll look at them and I'll see if they're good or not. And if they're good, I retype them and we use them during our study sessions, but I don't know where they get them from and since. They just give them to me and I feel like copyright infringement. I'll give them to you if, if you come into the, the session, you can have those, those questions. I think there's like 40 extra questions that I have. That I've been getting, yeah, over the years from students who either from other tutors or like one time they brought it to me. I don't even know where they got it from. It looks kind of shitty. It looked like pictures of a computer screen. I don't know, but it, they're.
If we go in, we could get those?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, will you be there tomorrow? I'm actually off tomorrow. So tomorrow I printed out a test because now, now that I look at the way you're doing it. It makes more sense to really utilize that highlighting technique. Though I printed the test from online. So I could sit down, take my time and. Really understand the question and I, I remember stuff from the test. So I wrote, wrote down um, not questions, but. Things that were on the test like.
And that's what people have given me. Sometimes they've gone out and they're like, miss, I went to my car and I wrote down five questions. They give them to me and then I'll make a question out of what they gave me, you know, like the little bits and pieces. So. Yeah.
Um, what time will you be there tomorrow?
I'll be here tomorrow from nine to three.
Nine to three. Okay. Um, if I could stop by. Maybe like at nine.
Sure. Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
All right. Sounds good, Laura. Thank you so much for your patience.
Well, thank you very much for your help.
Yes, of course. If you have any questions, you let me know.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.